We have to move forward, the meeting and the meeting session will come to order. First I have to announce that we held an executive session on a matter of personnel firing meeting tonight. And we will, we will adjourn to an executive session on a matter of personnel very quickly, probably very briefly, right after the conclusion of the meeting. We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the mother of all creation, our nation under God, in your soul, with the name of God.
President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Anthony.
Here.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Booker.
Here.
Councilwoman Gary.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Neill.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Public Affairs Director Lehrer.
Here.
Superintendent Hewing.
Here.
Engineer Mandinsky.
Here.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Project Manager.
We, we move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any items, should I have them from the consent agenda or is it going to be? Any changes to the proposed minutes? Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Salute.
Vice President Anthony Lewis, is he a second?
I'm second.
Councilwoman Martin, seconds. Any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda was approved. Moving on to citizens' comments. Do you have any citizens' comments now?
Just a couple of things, one I'm still waiting, some whispering, three months, I guess, since I was here.
Yes.
Last, so, and, so it doesn't have, certainly doesn't have to happen now, you've got sort of a long day, but I'm just wondering when we'll see that, and is there any idea when the Streetlight Project will start?
We're still waiting to hear back from PPR.
Okay. So that's that. I'm also, I was waiting, I offered time to do a presentation to the council, and I have, I have a video that's about fifteen minutes long, and it'll be available for questions afterwards, so is there some way, like in the next week or so, you could set a date so I could prepare for that? Does everybody in this still know more about, you know, what, what responsible item and what irresponsible item can do to us? We should, we should know that. I spent a couple of years now researching that, and I have that information, and I've given that to you. I'm not a consultant or anything. I'm retired, I don't want to import that, but I'm here for your benefit so that you can make good decisions. And the last thing I have, well, I tried to send you a couple of emails, but for whatever reason, that's, that's not working. Maybe, I don't know, maybe right after, or somehow could we exchange numbers or whatever for that telescope library program? I've done some groundwork on it, and before I dive into getting some grants and getting some scopes for families and children to use, and, you know, planning some outreach times, teaching times and so forth, I want to make sure the library is willing to do that, to be the host and administrator of that, so.
Thank you.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other citizens' comments? Hear none? Moving forward to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the items on the consent agenda?
Certainly.
Councilman Gary, is he a second?
Okay.
Councilman O'Neill, seconds. Any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The items on the consent agenda are approved. Moving on to the regular agenda. Discussion and action on the LIHWAAP program, attachment number four. That is the low-income household water assistance program. Treasurer James, interim manager James, I think you talked to...
Yes.
The representative from this program, could you briefly give us an overview of what, what that discussion was and...
I'm sure, so I had a phone call, and basically, this date has a program for low-income residents, and the resident would have to go through the program, apply for it. We are not a vendor, meaning we have not signed up to accept payment from the state in the program. So I wanted to, basically, you know, ask you guys permission, if it would be okay to become a vendor, so we can, you know, be an assistant to some of our low-income residents who are having issues, you know, paying their water to the trash.
And I confirm with you that this is not a taxing or burdensome, a super staff to do.
No, it's actually a custom to me, and it's been accepted and offered, so it's no major liability, why you doing it to us? And I say that because the only caveat is that if we accept payment on behalf of a resident, then we couldn't, like, take any type of action against that resident for ninety days. But I don't feel like that's an issue, because we owe a bill every ninety days, so.
And so they're worried this is a marketing, the communication piece is what we would be responsible for, getting the information out to our residents.
I think it would be helpful if we tell, you know, that, that resident who calls in and just, you know, "Oh, I can't pay, I'm doing it in hospital, yada, yada, yada." I think that's another option, to say, "Oh, hey, there's this aid program that you may be eligible for, we can give them the information." That doesn't say that they aren't, though, we can point them at.
A question on that, so are we checking on lower payment than the amount owed?
No.
So are we paying reimbursement for, for a bill that is in this program?
It would be up to the resident to let the LIHWAAP program know how much they owe. I do believe that they call us for confirmation.
So, so let me ask this, if the resident, if the notice of a resident to report the amount owed to the program, and the program lets payment to the borough, and we're giving them our right to take action against the resident, and the resident fails to notify the program, what recourse do we have?
It's a ninety-day period of recourse.
Well, what recourse do we have at the end of that ninety days?
Well, that's in the middle.
Yeah, essentially, we wouldn't have any other, like, bank account, that would be to pursue action directly against the, the residents, but the preferred method would be to file a O D against the property eventually, and try to clarify the building amount. You're obviously well experienced in this program.
Not with this particular program, but I am familiar with, and experienced with similar programs, that LIHWAAP program or heating and whatnot. I have, I do have clients that participate in this program, and still have a lot of experience with it. I think it's a good, a good thing to do, it's a good service to provide low-income households to help them through winter months.
In fact, it's a program where there would be no incentive for someone to under-actually their bill, because they will then have that approval of it, and then have to use it against their property, and especially toward landowners, they don't want to have that approval against those individuals, because they, you know, get in trouble for not having water.
Right.
So in my experience, having LIHWAAP, and, because they call this LIWAP, so I think it's almost as a theme. But, you know, in my experience with people who are low-income, it's a really good revenue for them, especially if they didn't go enough right now, and having that program is a really good thing, because there's a broad industry when it comes to right now.
And I appreciate that, my, so I have some more to explain to the LIHWAAP program. My concern is that we sometimes it's about best interest, sometimes it's about forward equity, and I just don't want the city to go into a situation where we're running a deficit, and creating a further problem for our taxpayers, because people aren't filing the paperwork in a timely fashion or when it, and, and there is, there is an issue.
And that, and there are people who just don't get their water.
Absolutely.
And so those people, it would be an advantage for us to be able to get being first with the water. I, I'm sure you don't have an approximate outstanding water payment. I don't, but I can tell you that, that, that number is actually pretty low in comparison to what we collect. Our collection rate is about ninety-four percent, you know what I mean? So we're not talking a great number. Yeah, but I know we've had some phone calls lately from elderly, you know, residents who sit in the hospital and they just need some type of help. Well, it's, it's an important service for when people are choosing to pay the water bill or restrictions, if they're choosing the water bill or pursuit, and that's really the economy that we're in, on fixed income. So it's, it's definitely, and there's going to be qualifications to financially pay in this program, so, you know, those people, it's, it's pretty hard to, to get into the program, this program, so. And the program also has state guards in place, so residents don't become particularly a failure of trying to use the program over and over again, so it's, to me, it's a learning.
LIHWAAP selects several times, does the borough have any, just based on that, do they?
I don't think so.
Anything to add, I just need to clarify.
No, we can provide a service.
They're not providing a service.
The LIHWAAP program goes through the, the utility company, so, you know, the people will apply to the county to get that, it's a waiver program, so they have to apply that way. And I'm assuming they probably have the same intention. So having a resource for people is a really good thing.
Yes, absolutely.
So there's no direct cost to the borough, no loss barely to the borough?
Nope, not at all.
So we're asking for a motion to allow us to sign the contract to join as a vendor for the program. Do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Aggersen makes the motion, is he a second?
I'll second.
Vice President Anna, second. Any further discussion? Hear none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed, moving on to committee meetings. Financial Administration in Portland, Vice President, you have to meet.
Nothing on line review, and then for discussion, anybody in the committee have any comments, concerns about the...
Treasurer's report?
Crickets, okay, good. Discussion on delivery of vehicles. I believe Chief Myers was going to lead this discussion.
Yes, I, I included in your packet an email, just going to be easier for myself, putting it on, yeah, but it came from our, our expert at Enterprise, and all twenty-two were canceled by court. So he always had a plan B, that's what he told me he called it, if he wasn't able to get his police interceptors, which his plan B is to go looking through dealerships, which granted, he deals with a lot of them, to see if they can find some. However, the problem is that it might cost more, and I didn't want to tell him to go ahead with that, until you guys started to look at what the difference in anything could be. Plus he called me today with a lot of information on that, I'm sure you have from that time, but it might cost a little bit, little bit more to pull off of a dealer's lock.
But Chief, in my work, my staff are on a nine-month waiting period for vehicles because of the check issue, and that is definitely a problem across the board, getting these vehicles out there, so I can understand frustration. If we take two looks, are we committed, or will we come back with numbers for purchase of vehicles?
Yeah, here, unfortunately, he sent me that stuff today, so I'll have it for you for next meeting, so you can, whatever, I mean, okay, this is going to be a chapter, so, um, I don't have a good chance of you'll look over all of them yet. Paul also told me that, when I asked, are the upfit costs, the upfit costs fifty percent down for us, and then they pay the other fifty percent. So that's going to be the price of the overall.
So is our contract canceled because the order canceled?
Canceled.
But did that cancel our contract?
Not then, probably.
Right, so how are they, I'm sure they have clause, but how are they presenting to the full contract?
They're looking at their, they're in fact, so I, I'll have all the information for you next time. I mean, it, the thing that I was concerned about was, I didn't really want to say okay until I brought the fact that it might not be the same price here, because that's the price that he was going to give us monthly, and now that may increase, because that's some of the twenty-twenty thirties, the first jump, the first jump, so.
I, I, I think, I think this requires a closer look at the contract for that surprise. I don't think that I'm comfortable moving forward with anything other than additional information being gathered at this time, Mr. President.
And I think we need to make this a priority, because my concern is, is the longer we wait for vehicles, that doesn't help us with the problem with vehicles. So if we could make that a, a priority, because I, I know that when we took this option, it took a long time for them to sell them two vehicles, if, if for opening a program back up for twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be a very short one now.
Yeah, and that's, that's the issue last time, is I think we only had the choice of four, I don't know if there were other options that were better, but when we finally got Enterprise locked in, it had a limited other vendor for a possible contract, and I, and I don't see this getting any better any quicker, but we need vehicles.
Well, I have a question about that, I, I'm not sure if I understood you completely correctly, and if I did this correctly, I know you will, but how many police cruisers do we currently have?
Nine.
How many are functional?
They're all, they're all functional.
So do we really have a crisis of vehicles at the moment? I guess is my question.
What is going to, what will happen is the maintenance costs increase incrementally every year, and the plan was to start replacing vehicles globally, so we didn't have a huge expense all at one time. So I think that not only that the police vehicles we're looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at highway department vehicles, not, they're all locked in.
We'll continue that discussion there.
Yeah, that's my only worry is about, because we have some cruiser, we have the, the one vehicle that was very old that we were complaining about.
So we have several, thirty-four teens, but the one is costing me a lot of money.
Yeah.
Um, and it still is, and as long as it still is, and that's the one that Enterprise was going to take, so, um.
So, but I don't think we're in crisis, no?
I don't think so either.
I think that we needed to put it at the top of the agenda, because if we wait that, that close for four, the damage will occur, so I think we need to just get the information together, and later take an informed decision.
Yeah, so if I may, this was for information purposes, we weren't going to make a decision tonight, however, the chief has already received information from them, maybe we can, because we've already made the decision to do this, revisiting it based on the information that we now have on the additional cost would be prudent, so by next council meeting, perhaps we would have all the information we need to make a good decision.
Well, they have it, but I didn't send it to you.
Okay, so I give us a couple of weeks to do the analysis, maybe the solicitor can review the contract with us, just to make sure we're all solid.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a copy of the Enterprise contract, so, is there any other stuff?
I'm sure they had it out, and this was negotiated prior to the seat of this council, correct?
Yes, this summer, I believe.
Right, so I'm sure Enterprise had it out for this type of eventuality, but it seems like at the moment, there are problems to solve, and I'm worried about them coming back and saying, and I understand contrastually, and that's why there's like a, I know we're on the same page on this, yeah. Thank you, Chief.
Hi, everybody. Public Affairs Director Lehrer talked about the vehicle challenges on two sides of it.
I'm up to it.
Turn around upside down.
So I don't even care, without according, just to touch on that, that's a way, and again, I was, whoops, Chief, and I don't believe curse, has contract in hand either, which to us, I mean, it's not really necessary, show me the money, whatever, show me the product. Uh, the term is unclaiming a vehicle, I've done, my wife has got a little leasing, but I guess, so, we have five trucks, wherever, they're in space, they're in Pennsylvania. Some of them have already passed through the upfit station, which is right now, New Harrisburg Truck Body, right down the street. We're not sure exactly what has left there already, because communication between New Harrisburg Truck Body, Enterprise, which our new liaison is named Dalton Adams, he's got the whole situation dumped on his desk as well, so we're in a little bit of a rough situation. The situation, I have nine vehicles, probably works, Curtis has, well, three, four, but one truck that we were trying to replace immediately. The trucks that arrived, we were never approached with what vehicle do you want? What kind of addition, upfit components do you need? So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty deep, it's a pretty, you know, there's a lot of information and probably way too much to dissect out. I, I'm, I'm a little worried, I, you know, out of my nine, one is out again, done, it's done. It's an upplow vehicle, so we're not worried about that at the moment, but two of my upplow vehicles and Curtis' truck that was scheduled to be replaced is his upplow vehicle, are barely running, so.
Were the specifications for your vehicles set forth in the contract that was ratified in December?
I haven't got information on that, it was never presented to me, I reached out to try to keep the ball rolling during the former manager's illness, you know, his time off, and I was shut off completely, and no information was passed on to me until whenever this came.
A week ago?
One week ago, yeah.
So it sounds like that contract information was co-hostold at that time, who was the person holding that information, who was negotiating the contract?
I assume it was the former manager.
Okay, so any proof of the contract?
So my question is, is vehicle, I, I'm going to just put it out there, plow vehicles, we need those replaced for this season, or do you think we'll make it through? And are any of those, or upfitted four-cylinder plowing?
Uh, the information we got during your visit last week to the upfitter New Harrisburg Truck Body, he believes two pickup trucks passed through there and were upfit with, you know, a plow, assuming they put flashing lights on them, don't know, but the problem with that is that one of the trucks apparently is a crew cab, which, you know, I don't know how long that is, thirty-eight feet long?
I'd say it's around.
Yeah, standard tab eight-foot box is what we use for our two small pickup trucks, so that's what we need, and we also need them with the plow and the controller unit that the men prefer.
Well, it sounds like we need to see the contract.
Yeah, 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 I have a little, again, yeah, just a little bit, you know, this is just upfit information, so you can look at this and go, oh, no, 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 that's not what we wanted, but...
Should be invited, I was back in to have a conversation, because, yeah, I, again, because I'm really worried about the vehicles, especially with this department, that we need to replace, and I understand, like, with the, with the situation with vehicles, it's just a thing everywhere, but if we have vehicles that are being upfitted, or, what is, is that the right word?
Upfit, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm just making, I'm just making a reference. So are, are we going to be contracted, contracted because they've done that to the specifications that were made from the, the prior?
In the contract?
Yeah, that's what I'm a little worried about, when we have five vehicles that were...
The representative stated that, this is the number he used last week, ninety percent of the time, they can have no problem unclaiming a vehicle, finding another municipality or landscaping contractor, which is basically what, I hate to say, these trucks were upfit for, was just for landscapers, not for municipal.
You know that?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
And so would he, when...
In our opinion, in, in my department's opinion.
Yeah, we understand.
And that's an important opinion.
Uh, yeah.
So is finding a vehicle that would fit your specifications, does he indicate that he'd be able to do that?
I don't believe there was a, an exact indication of that.
Have you not had, have you not received good communication from our vendor Enterprise?
Again, we just had contact with, I just had contact with him last week for the first time.
What precipitated that contact?
Uh, concern from the police department, because...
They thought of the acting end.
They have some vehicles with, you know, like, hundred thousand bottles on them, I think, maybe, something like that. I have vehicle, you know, a nineteen ninety-seven Ford.
I, I know Councilwoman Aggersen's concerns, I think your department is the priority of all that, it sounds like police department, much as they might not want to, could continue to function at full service with the vehicles that they currently have, but we're coming up on a spin season, we've been pretty lucky last couple of years. I think either way, it makes sense to have the Enterprise representative here in two weeks, maybe have the solicitor review what we have in place, and what our options are going forward, so that we can make sure you're good to go as a safety.
Were there any options provided to you by Enterprise at the time that you spoke with them?
No, no plan for a denum or, oh, well, I have drawn with what he had, whatever, Turner Chevrolet, yeah, he always has trucks, and nothing like that came up. I was just paraphrasing, you know.
What is he thinking, what are they going to be, I'm sorry, good.
He was wanting to say that he, Dalton did say he put everything on hold, correct?
Okay, correct.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, everything was on hold.
Yes, so two trucks may have passed through, they were fitted with a plow, I'm not sure what other components, uh, that's what, that's what the vendor at New Harrisburg Truck believes. He showed me his files, we get a number, you know, it doesn't say four, but Harrisburg Borough, it just says, if the numbers match, he knows that those two trucks, or five trucks, or ten trucks go together.
Do you have the capacity to put together the list of things that you actually want?
Yes, I have that, so right now.
We do?
Yes.
Chief Myers, before we move on to presume that you're okay with moving forward with the priority that we just talked about, are there any safety issues or security issues with your vehicles now, that we should be aware of to help our prioritization?
Oh, the one just cost sixteen hundred dollars, that we're getting rid of to get repaired, but now it's showing a check engine light now, so it's going to cost me more money, but, no, the whole idea of getting involved with Enterprise from the beginning, and Curtis and, and C H can tell you this, my priority was getting them trucks.
Okay.
When you say them, you mean?
Highway and silver.
Highway and apartment.
Chief, I, I do have a question, I'm confused now, and please don't kill the messenger here, but how many vehicles are in operation in a long time?
Well, if you want a special event, we'll have everything we have out, there can be as many as four people working, and when cars go down, they have the tendency to go one after the other. So while it does sound like I have a lot of cars, one is a pickup truck, and we're down two, because I traded those in two, you know, one vehicle last year, so that's why Enterprise is going to give me two more, but...
So those two were in addition to the nine?
Yeah, they're placed up.
So the two are part of the nine?
Yes.
Okay, so nine is one pickup that's down to eight, you got rid of two already, now we're down to six?
No, we have, we have, right now I have nine vehicles still running.
Okay.
Six of those, six of those are far-run vehicles, which are driven by police officers, one of them is a dog car, so there are five cars available. The old dog car is not totally equipped anymore, it's a second-run vehicle, one of those silver sprint vehicles that we bought, that's a second-run vehicle, so when I say second-run, C S O, if we have to, if I have to go somewhere, I can jump in one of those, I mean, that's, and the pickup truck gets used to all the trailers, the range, for the most part, and for special events.
Okay, and normally you have how many cars over there? Two, three?
That's part, I mean, that's part of the set, two or three is most likely.
Okay, and there's five cruisers?
Yes.
Okay. Still sounds to me like that highway department's highest priority, nineteen ninety-seven, you do say, Chief?
Yes, and that's a vehicle that... Yes, and that's a vehicle that, well, we haven't had that one fail inspection yet, but it just did, basically because of rust.
And I think that's when you guys were talking about your vehicles, whatever you're talking about the vehicles, there were a lot of vehicles that we were worried about not passing inspection as they came up.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and again, I go back to we need a snow plow that will fit our streets, because we have narrow streets and turns.
Yeah, yeah, so the smaller trucks are the bread and butter for the borough, but the bigger ones have their very specified jobs as well.
So can we coordinate an effort so that we're not waiting two weeks for all this to happen, where you talk to Dalton and give him your list of desired vehicles with the appropriate attachments? He tells you whether or not it's possible, and if there's an additional cost to make that happen, under what timeframe? And then you can route that information back to us through the manager?
We kinda already had that discussion when he came here last week.
Okay.
So I think it's just a matter of putting something on paper, if he shows you already have that. He spent, Dalton spent about three hours with us, last Wednesday going through and actually visiting the highway department, seeing the vehicles. Talking to Scott and C H to find, to figure out what exactly is that we need, not that we just want, but what we need for the street, you know, of the borough, so we, we had that discussion.
Okay, so that he's had that discussion, he understands that, is he getting us a?
He does, I think he's trying to compromise with us saying, no.
We don't want it.
But I think one, um, the downside is because vehicles were ordered, they're on hold, we can't use them, what is gonna happen? Like, it is not gonna happen this year.
We, we discussed the, what we thought that, the day that we had a meeting, the high probability that we would be able to use three of the vehicles. But then when we found out, uh, can probably possibly maybe use one, and, and that might be one that actually sewer would, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not speaking for Curtis, but I'm just, you know, including him in the weeds. Uh, just when, when we see the outfit and the materials and we go and walk around the truck and see, you know, the, the two that are now sitting. I think they actually already removed them from New Harrisburg's lot, so that's a good indication that somebody else could use them, but, um. We, it turns out we cannot, once we, I went down with the, you know, the head mechanic, Will, and we looked at the vehicles that were there and the materials that they proposed according to the. Scheduled outfit, that, it's, this stuff's not gonna work. So.
This is very frustrating.
It's a study, I mean, I have, it's really easy for me, you know, for me to get, freshen and information.
So, and it, I would, I would like to say that it doesn't sound like this is Enterprise's fault a hundred percent. I think that, um, this was a lack of communication on the ordering process, but I think that hopefully we'll be able to resolve, um, with your expertise.
I think that's what really makes us termular, is it's not really Enterprise's fault, so maybe, yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll keep trying to work with them with what they have.
Go back to the contract, you're sure?
Yeah.
If I recollect from that, um, when we did all the initial presentations for Enterproject, do you remember something to the effect of like looking at crew cabs rather than single cabs? I know this is like a sidebar, um, because of their trading value being higher or something?
Right, Enterprise wants that.
Yeah, so that's, I know that's something.
Yes, I, I agree, you're correct.
I just think that if we ordered the wrong outfit and the vehicle, we need to.
Yeah, we have a pickup truck, and we put a plow that's nine-six instead of eight-six on that, it can't fit down the street literally, cannot.
So there are two issues, there's the length of the vehicle, and there's the width of the plow.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and some of the trucks, we also found out, the two pickup trucks, I guess they're, well, the two or three or whatever, I can't even remember, so confused right now. Well, door rear wheel, which again, I mean, I'm sure we driving down the street, you know, I'm driving door rear wheel usually here during the day, because that's all that's available for me, and I just like, you know, when you're.
Do we have any, I think, across the current fleet that can be upfitting for snow plowing for the season?
Uh, no, just the one that just failed inspection, the nineteen ninety seven Ford, uh, the plowing attachments had been removed years and years ago as it, as it was, uh.
Do we need to have a backup plan for snow plow?
I have already reached out, and I'm kind of, since I've been here, have been networking. One time I was, and, you know, meeting with other municipalities, boroughs specifically our size, communicating with them. Everybody, you know, Uproon, Monroe, even private contractors, I don't know how that would work, and I don't know how it would work if we had to make a call with the name and beg somebody to come in with one of their trucks. How that would work, uh, insurance wise or liability wise as well, I, I mean, I guess it would be all on them, it's their vehicle, so, um.
I'm not, I'm not sure what type of truck the pickup truck is, but is it, would it be a possibility to upfit that?
It's a G M C Sierra.
I'm very impressed with some of the proactive actions that you've taken with regard to this issue, and I thank you, and hopefully we can.
Eventually, certainly, there could be, there will be a good outcome eventually, whether we have to make sure that. The borough is protected as much as possible financially and with the materials. We thought we were going to be able to use one, two, three of these vehicles that are, you know, like I said, here. And then, okay, we'll use it for a year, we'll never feel that one might shit a lot, it might have eight hundred miles on it at the end of the year, but we can get rid of it, which is a lease program, because we just tell them, hey, we're done with this one. But now the waiting game with the supply issues, you know, is affecting things, but that, that's gonna. I think the waiting game for parts and trucks is going to alleviate, not so much, they're never gonna make, you know, a vehicle available very much again like it was if you ordered one off the, off the factory floor, but. Like, as she said, you know, then the cost is, we'll get you a vehicle a little more quickly than we used to, but the whole world's costs are, which we see with, yeah, all material.
So, we're already, um, we can snow for the next thirty days, right, because of our first snow, I'm sorry. I didn't remember the holiday, I didn't remember the first snow, I grew up, I was in the.
Right, correct.
Um, are you prepared to at least handle that within the next thirty, forty-five, sixty days?
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm trying to, so I'll quickly make the move on this.
Um, yeah, we're, we're prepared to do it, putting the plows on smaller vehicles, even the plows themselves are, you know, twelve foot wide, they're, they can be installed.
Can you do it in hours?
It's just not the best point. Yeah, um, and the other issue, well, it's a little strange with the leaf and the snow thing, because the two, you know, our biggest vehicles are used for the leaf collection, so like, I don't know if you've ever seen one, but a gigantic box, you know, has to be lifted by our biggest machines. Placed on there specifically, you know, aligned and then fashioned and, but, uh, that's, that's just part of the game with the leaf and the snow anyway. So, yeah, I mean, if they said, it's gonna snow this weekend, okay, it's Tuesday, we certainly can get everything we have prepared.
Sure.
And, and, you know, hope that it makes it through.
No idea, but we'll do.
Yeah, honestly, I don't wanna, we're, we're not sure if one of, one of the other vehicles honestly is, is gonna make it to snow at this point, so, but we'll do everything we can to make sure that it does.
I'd like to appreciate all the contingency that you're planning, thinking of and all of that.
Yeah, hopefully I don't have to make, one of our calls, or even calling for my little network and, hey, remember when you? But people are willing to do that, and now, since we're, I think, I can give back to them now, or the borough can give back for, you know, if we need to give and take. Since the borough is kinda, we're moving forward with getting the things that we need and, you know, vehicles and equipment and stuff like that. Modernizing, I, I say, okay, hey, next time we'll paint that, or, you know, next year, three years, whatever, or call us again, you know, I'll, and we do that already with neighboring municipalities. So for me, you know, relationships have been A-OK.
Can I just add one more thing? I'm sorry, Council, can you just please keep in mind that we are not paying for any type of lease payment for any of these said vehicles, we said the vehicle is delivered. And the last thing we want to do is have Enterprise fast talk us into taking a vehicle that we don't want for a year. And have the highway department let that vehicle sit on the lot and not be moved.
Yeah, good point.
I just wanted to just bring it out there, if they need to get delivered, we have to pay for it, if they need it or not, we will have to pay for it, so I think it's in our best interest for us to give them what they need. Thank you.
Do you have what you need from us?
Yes, you have exposure, I guess, sort of plan on, they said they're going to give five trucks and one police car, obviously I can't speak for the police vehicle, but Curtis and I can discuss, you know. It doesn't have to be five, I don't know where that number came from either. When we initially, I thought, well, when I was initially, when it was reported to me that we were going down to Leech Road, it was like, okay, highway will get two trucks. Sewer will get one truck, police will get two vehicles, so I don't know where five came from, I mean, sure, that's great, but.
How, but they can find, we'll be on it.
Where did that information come from?
The former manager, the information given to me yet, um.
There was a set of, of identified vehicles that they were going to replace from each department, and I think that, so, but it's just if they weren't able to find particular vehicle for other departments.
Yeah, we see that.
Yeah.
So, okay, I was planning on working with Daniel and Curtis.
Do we know that it's contracted?
Yeah, and Dalton, to get the report, and we'll request that the Enterprise representative attends our next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, please. Mr. Chairman, please change the topic quickly.
My laptop is dying. No, Dana, thanks. Okay, thank you very much for that, that was very important. Uh, the next is on my sheet is the, unless we need any other conversation about that, are you, are you okay with what we're talking about?
Yes, um, I would add, we have an F three fifty, it's a two thousand six, um, it's iffy, we can lend it to highway for snow plowing if needed. My concern is if we get a heavy wet snow with a high accumulation, it might not be able to make it through the whole storm. But that would be the first vehicle we replace.
Okay, thank you. All right, discussion in, uh, in action, or potential action on E A C's request to move budget money from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three for their electronic recycling event on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. I'm not sure why we would, um.
I think this session needs to be incorporated into the budget for twenty twenty-one.
The budget request?
Yeah.
Instead of us approving it now?
Yeah.
Good, good, Council?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have? Something worth some safety, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. Uh, I just wanna, uh, make sure the, uh, thing we approved last week about putting up the grant writer proposal is underway, we actually do have had, have had people that have inquired, if I understand correctly.
At least one person.
At least one person has, yes.
Yes.
Good, and we're advertising that appropriately in the moment, that's good, okay, thank you.
Something worth some safety, Councilman Burger?
Alrighty, uh, we're gonna start with, uh, ten Harrisburg Department reports, so Superintendent, uh, Superintendent Dewey and Engineer and Institute, you, you guys like that? After the floor? Uh, did you put anything in writing for last week, because Ian was in the forecast and I wasn't sure how much I need to update? Uh, we did get pretty significant rain, it didn't affect our flows that much. Uh, we've been averaging about six hundred thousand gallons, six hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. We hit eight fifty on October first, the second it was seven twenty, yesterday it was six hundred seventy-nine thousand gallons, so we're in pretty good shape with that. Uh, just what, uh, are mercury testing for a permit renewal, which I refer to D E P, I'm adjusting tomorrow morning. Um, we just sent out an approved proposal to replace a clearing contact sluice gate, so that will be coming up sometime soon. As far as stormwater goes, um, the proposal for lining Frederick, lining the storm main under Frederick from Locust to Strawberry Alley went out. That Darla Panoni came out and surveyed the storm sewer. It has enough, there was a concern that there would be a belly or a slope, not enough slope, that it would necessitate the replacement of the storm sewer. There is enough slope, we are going to have a contractor come out to televise it, so we can tell what kind of condition it is. If it's in good enough condition that it doesn't need to replace, we'll have it lined where there's a part that definitely needs to be replaced, that's going to be going forward.
So, uh, Senator Rogalski, you provided a updated, certainly a dated quote program?
Yes.
So that is still other consideration?
That is the worst case scenario. That is, if we televise it and it's not salvageable, they go ahead and replace it. Um, if it is salvageable and we do line it, it would be less than what Rogel estimated for the replacement of the line, and we wouldn't have as many angry residents.
Let's understand if some easement issues.
There are fences, there are trees, it would be a headache.
Thank you.
Um, working on closing out the H O P for Simpson and Market, where we had to dig last year for a sinkhole and a collapse of storm sewer. Essentially, the crosswalk needs to be repainted, and then we can close that out. And last week, with the rain over the weekend, there was an inlet at the wastewater treatment plant, the water kinda collapsed and the bricks are coming out. So we're going to have to replace the top part of the inlet. And that is all.
Thank you.
Uh, to piggyback on Superintendent Dewey's report, so we've continued to assist on, uh, number of items there that he had mentioned. Uh, just building on a couple of things that, uh, we're doing in addition to that, the refined paint project at the wastewater treatment plant, we just continue to do our diligence. Uh, look for some additional response back with respect to electrical and controls information that was missing from the formal submittal. I had also asked for an update on the, uh, delivery of the equipment, I think I had mentioned last month, that's kinda aligning with the January timeframe, so I was looking for an update there. I hadn't heard back from the manufacturer, but I know that they're all, um, working on getting themselves down to New Orleans for the annual wastewater conference that you all will probably really like. Um, it is daytime, but they, that's, that's their fun, so I'm hoping that I'll hear back from them after that conference. Uh, the grid system that's also at the wastewater treatment plant, so we reached out to D E P and are requiring about the need to do our quality management permitting there. So pretty much any time you've had a substantial project that you're planning, you have to go through D E P permitting. Uh, we're hoping that maybe we can avoid doing some of that here, if, um, we can show that the equipment functions pretty similar to what it's replacing. But it is a little bit different in, uh, in its construction, and I suspect we'll have to do our quality management permit, but that was something you approved a few meetings ago and move forward that project, so we'll continue to help there if there's permitting needed. Life Street Park, I believe that was on the planning commissions meeting last week, uh, but we did get a set of the drawings for phase four. And provided some comments back to Landmark Homes on the sanitary sewer network, nothing too crazy there, mostly with respect to separation between utilities, uh, the water and the wastewater infrastructure there and the development. And the last thing I would mention here for you this evening, I understand that Borough has the R P out, uh, as I mentioned, with respect to the grantsmanship. So two recent programs just reopened from C F A, the Commonwealth Finance Authority, that deal with water. deal with water and wastewater infrastructure improvements. You may be interested in pursuing something, obviously, for your wastewater infrastructure. So those programs are the PA Small Water and Sewer Program and the PA H2O Program, both again being grants. PA Small Water and Sewer Eligibility is a program, I'm sorry, a project between thirty thousand and five hundred thousand dollars. And I think there was a hundred and five million dollars put into that program. The PA H2O Program is for a larger project. It's from five hundred thousand dollars to twenty million dollars, and I believe they put about two hundred million dollars into that fund. The Borough had in years past applied for the PA Small Water and Sewer, I believe, for some of the I and I infrastructure work that Superintendent Huey's been working on. But it may be of the desire of the council to consider an application for some of the things we're talking about at the wastewater plant, maybe the grit system, or some of the continued I and I and sanitary sewer system repair work. Applications are due by December twenty-first, and the smaller of the funds, the PA Small Water and Sewer, there's a fifteen percent matching component there, so up to eighty-five percent of projects coming through. And the PA H2O, I think, is a one-third, two-third match with the Borough, you'd match one-third of the project cost there. So whether you would love to, you know, maybe wait until you have someone on board to do the grantsmanship, to work with Superintendent Huey, certainly I can continue to work with him to help prioritize projects, but wanted to bring that to your attention because those are some pretty decent programs that just again reopened and historically have funded a lot of projects that I've been involved with personally. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have from us.
Assuming that we don't hire a grant writer between now and the end of November, will you help us write those grants?
Absolutely. So we do that, and I anticipate our firm is going to submit a lot of them. The one thing that I should mention with CFA, it is highly competitive and a lot of times very political. So we know what needs to be put in the application in terms of structure cost opinions, exhibits, all those types of things, narratives, cost breakdowns. But a lot of stuff that has to happen to make that application successful is behind the scene, stuff that your local legislators are going to really need to help with to get your application to get to the top and get funded. So we've actually a lot of times helped our clients with doing some of that political outreach. We have a little letter that we recommend, you know, be sent, but it takes even a little more than just getting a letter and the application. There's some real conversations and dialogue that will help get that. So those are the things that we can certainly assist with, but yes, to answer your question, we'd be glad to help with that application process.
What would the cost be for you to be able to do that for us?
So usually, and it depends on the project, if it's one that we've done a little bit of the cost opinion work for, Superintendent Huey's got some cost that helps, if we've done some drawings in the past or some exhibits. But I know that we've done them for about thirty-five hundred, four thousand dollars in time brackets. So if it's something that we already have some things that can potentially do that.
So we would need to know whether or not we can match according to what you were talking about before you want to put that together?
Yes, as part of the application, we want to identify what those matching funds are. And the nice thing is that there are, you know, budgets, funds, obviously those could be the match. If there are other grant programs, those funds could be matching. For example, and I don't have a Penn Vest project right now, but say a project was approved by Penn Vest, you could show Penn Vest as a matching fund and still get grants. So that's all part, what we would do as part of the financial element of that application.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to the Public Works Department's reports. So Public Works Director Laird, do you have anything to add to your written report?
No.
Okay. Sorry, I know within that report, there was a mention, the cancer we received from Penn Guarding Fund, and I'm not sure, um...
Penrod was...
Okay, gotcha. Then we'll hold for that. And then we have our next committee items on public works. So we have a update on Capitol Monument Conference of Infrastructure Plan, and your goal is not here.
Adrian Rogowski is currently in Florida, assisting with his emergency response there. But he did ask us, he did communicate with me and ask us to set up a, a meeting that was just, it was a council meeting for setting the priorities, so they'll come with us, to us with a list and some recommendations, and we'll set their priorities. So he would like us to set a date for that, for that meeting.
And then we have the Public Safety Department reports. We have Sergeant Police Chief Myers. Would you like to add anything?
Yes. I wanted to explain my report that was included in your package, apparently, where it said other interpretations that could be made of what exactly I meant. It's a little council meeting, and then I shared it to like eight other people and got opinions. So that was a placeholder for the fact that I understood from the email chain that you wanted a report from me and that you wanted it at one time. So my report is to do this thing, is do the first meeting in a month of a working session. And I was not attempting to be anything other than factual in that I was unable to provide it, and this is why. I didn't mean anything else by it. Perfectly what it said, I meant. That's how I did it to like eight other people, and they were varying, varying comments from those eight other people, so I thought I'd better address it and say that there was nothing other than facts. And perhaps, maybe I should explain it's fact a little further, but it's just a placeholder to talk and get this stuff done.
We move on to Fire Chief, who's not here, and then EMT World has a direct report, and we'll be able to get documents from the city. So there's really a lot of new items on public safety. So we have discussion on solar, your speed, and signs.
I was asking to get some information on solar signs. I believe I include that for the kit, and also the ones we already have are convertible to solar. And I can realize that that price in there, too.
A question on that, but for the twenty-five hundred dollars, is that the uplit cost?
Yes, that would change it in the solar.
Is it? A lot much extra for this?
And when you kind of add them together, they almost have to what the cost for this one, all right.
Chief, would adding a solar capability reduce the mobility, repositioning?
You know, I don't know, because I don't know exactly. I think that's, it's just a smaller solar panel on top. I don't think it will reduce it, but I don't have any insight on that one. I don't, I don't know. I can't hundred percent say. But I don't think it would, because I explained to them that we wanted, you know, portability of our major, our major things.
Would you mind looking into that? And the reason I'm asking is, the solar units that I've seen in other municipalities very recently, the panels are quite large, and they attach to the pole in addition to the speed unit? There's a separate attachment of those. So I just don't know if that would create labor issues or, you had shared that at first the repositioning of the signs took two people in the department, and then it came down to one person who knew what they were doing. This might increase our, our labor commitment if those are going to be moved around at any frequency?
Sure.
I'm just a little curious about that.
Definitely, yeah.
Thanks, Chief. Now we have our discussion on stop sign requests at Gale and Hoover Streets. You know, last meeting, we had a citizen bring that up. So I would, Chief, would you like to provide some information on that? Are you familiar with that intersection?
Yes, yes, I am. I didn't know if anybody would go down there and see it, but I did talk to the traffic sergeant, and that's, that would be the same way with adding other signs. We weren't, if anywhere, we'd have to do a survey to see. And I think the number of cars going through it probably will surprise people. But we'd have to do a survey to see if there's, I don't know, where you need to put the signs there. I don't, last time I was down, it was a while ago. I was going to go down one street and then said, oh, yeah, I couldn't. So I haven't been down there in a while, but because it's a bus stop, that's also the story in there, into that discussion, so.
That brings up a question of mine, which is, that I understood, it wasn't at the last meeting, so, but I understood that that was one of the main reasons that was brought up, is because that was a bus stop, and now traffic that goes through there, and it's not being a four-way stop. Does the school district provide to you a list of all the bus stops?
No.
It's on, it's on the school district's website.
How did the school district take bus stops? Do we know that? Because I, like, I...
You have to learn how you do it. I don't know that.
If something's not working out and we are getting complaints about it, we should coordinate with them and say, this is not a good location for a bus stop. This is a better alternative, so, safer.
I, I have seen that bus go through that intersection, and basically it kind of does like a, like a big rectangle, so maybe, yeah, moving into a block next to it.
It's a calculus problem that they do that's tied, I think, to where the children are living and how many streets they have to cross to get. Because you've seen buses stop one block apart trying to avoid having children cross over streets, so it is a conversation that we can have with the school district to say, hey, can you relook at this calculus to see if there's a way that we can move it somewhere else without...
Yeah, and I know that, I think it was last year, I concerned with the bus stop because kids were propping on something. One of their concerns was the lack of bus routes, and with them buffing kids now to multiple buildings. I think that there is some impact on that, but there's definitely, because I go back to the bus stop in front of my house, I, the parents are very good this year standing out with the kids, but in years past, it's been a little scary. So I, I would encourage some kind of coordination for school.
Do they change bus stops mid-year?
Not mid-year, but in the, before school year, they'll, they'll...
So what's up with it for this year?
Well, I don't know.
I, if you talk to the scene of transportation, I don't think you're stuck with that.
Right, I don't think you're stuck, but...
But it's a big maneuver to tell kids to go to different shops, and also rebounding at the timing. You know, I think there would have to be a big reason to do it.
I agree.
Yeah. And it's good, yet I don't know that it would happen.
Yeah, you know, it's not just like, oh, just go down the next block tomorrow. It doesn't work.
No, especially with the kid and trying to get them out there.
Chief, do we have a sense of the cost? I know you asked about that before, and I forget the answer, I apologize. The cost of doing a study on that intersection?
No, I don't, I don't know because I never see it. You guys can, it's yours that takes care of that.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that particular intersection kind of ran me of the previous one we've discussed, coming in from Lacy Park, I don't, I'm just, I don't know.
I'm sure this one has more traffic.
Oh, it does, it does, but, yeah. Anyway, thanks, Chief. So our next committee item is discussion on new hires.
I just wanted to update council where we are. Written test, and physical test was given by the consular forum. When the results of the written test came in, we picked the candidates that met the criteria, and we have, we have them interviewed already, and we're looking towards getting backgrounds done soon as we can.
So when you're interviewing candidates, I want to take some of that you would like to hear. I know, I feel like very competitive as well, so we try to, when we interview, as soon as we have a candidate that we're comfortable with, we try to get them, although we offer them the head of other school districts, because, I mean, that's not competitive. And with, being a police officer, I know it's probably even more competitive left from me, like, I guess, if they, like, do you, do you have any idea of, of, like, how we can, like, utilize something like that to kind of get somebody in before other municipalities go after them, or is that not...
Well, other ones are going to go after the same ones, but they're looking more at trying to, for some of them. We're just taking people who are in current and certified. Police officers or are in the academy before the hiring.
Gotcha.
So before in the academy, it's given us a few more of a look at, because they usually are. So we can provide a conditional offer while they're in the academy, but, you know, I think that, I think that this is going to be another situation where we're going to end up, I would not like to offer somebody a job without giving a thorough background.
Similar. And in the event that, well, I guess, it's sort of in the academy, I think, we'll have a job, so that you can, you're like, hey, like, in the interim, like, you could work with a C F O or something like that, but I know being in the academy is crazy, how would be you work?
Well, it's kind of a part-time academy, like, to, for a lot of them.
So that could be around the age, but you find something that's a part-time.
Grand, are we, are we able to offer a conditional, are we able to make a conditional offer with the union?
I think there's a problem in this state, council, not that, but the service was irregular. Are you familiar with this?
So I guess to follow up on Councilman Booker's comment, he said, did we make them an offer to, and you said the background checks, so that's a question, whether we could offer a conditional contingent on the background checks? I don't know if that's permissible or not. That makes some of the big fight.
Thanks, Chief. And then the next one, I've also, Chief, so just discussion on dash cams. So if you'd like to provide more information outside of the quote you provided?
Only that, they're very interested in, they're very interested in them, and if we were going to get them, it would be about a sixty-day turnaround, so we'd be looking for some kind of authorization. I don't know, we might even be able to wait till the budget for next year for them.
So are, this is, we already have these, these smartphones for our body cams, correct? So there's no savings in the fact that if it's through the same company and we already have the hardware?
Well, these are considerably less expensive than the ones we've put in now.
Gotcha.
I can get almost all of them for the price of one.
Okay. But, but, to, I guess my question is, do officers use this smartphone that they already have on them and then kind of place it in a docking camera to use? Or are they a separate cell phone?
Right, it's, it's a separate, they use the body cams, open body cams, and we have separate...
I guess that would be a lot like a geographic scheme of crime.
We have a separate control, what is it called? We have a sep- sep- separate camera in cars.
Gotcha.
And so they were trying to get those two worked together, but I, I believe they missed out because they didn't move fast.
When you say worked together?
They were trying to get the body cameras and the patrol witness cameras that we have in the cars to work as a, as a team, like the body cameras we had first, and did with the car cameras.
When you say worked as a team, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that. I remember Lieutenant Curtis talking about this issue. He said there's, there's separate units, they upload separately, and the new vehicle cameras would upload without officer intervention.
Right, same way as body cameras do.
But are you suggesting that one would operate, the other would shut down, or vice versa, or?
What I'm suggesting is if we get these new dash cams, the cost will be, the cost to install them would also include taking out the old ones, so the old ones aren't going to interact the same way. They need to have the server to download.
Correct.
So that's, those are the ones that we're trying, we're trying to remove all those obstacles to stick everything in the cloud. So that was the price that we got, and I wanted you to see what, what you can tell from what the camera looks like, if not just stick a cell phone on them.
And I imagine that they're on the same server, or on the same program, you could film high school football, and we have two cameras, and they'd be synced on the same play. same play, so I, I assume, I'm sure in assumptions, but I assume that they would, like, communicate within the same program, so you'd tell, like, at this time, at this minute, these are the two, these are synced from the two different cameras, sort of thing. See, that would be cool, I don't remember, I think it was maybe when you were out for, working with us, but, uh, Lieutenant Curtis, he was a long explanation of this, and the biggest thing was we were going to save a ton of time on officers downloading data, and not getting touched, and be more reliable, and be more real-time, and maybe this function out on the additional, but we, I remember thinking that it was a very good idea when we heard that.
Absolutely, I don't, I don't, and I think that these might operate the same, the new ones will operate the same way, but they're not going to be spending any time downloading the data, it's just going to go, or them automatically. The question is whether or not it syncs together, that would be very cool to know, if we're going to do that. So if you're okay waiting until budget time, I think it'd be more appropriate for us to kind of figure out how to get it into your budget that way, instead of trying to-
But, Chief, did you not, I'm going to reach in, did you not say that there were some funds that were set aside somewhere that might be able to be used for that?
No, I said I had, I have some in my budget under something, the line I admit I did not spend all of.
I, I see, okay.
But it's not going to be, it's not going to touch that a lot.
I thought there was money from somewhere, okay. I'll have to look later. Thanks, Chief. All right, I don't believe there are any extra things for, um, my, uh, me, uh, so I will send it over to President.
Okay, thank you. Next one, community outreach, Councilman Brown.
Yes, I have, uh, well, based on the library meetings on report, uh, as we enter into the kind of school building.
Uh, just two things, one, they're working on the final visualization of the different high school, uh, work, and also there was an incident that most people know about, um, the child bringing a weapon in the school, uh, last Tuesday. Um, they have some concerns, and they're going to be talking about that, but he also commented, uh, the county police didn't agree just.
Uh, I'm happy to report that our website, uh, has moved out of the, uh, design phase into the data migration stage. Yeah, it's already, everything that moves forward in that project, uh, so I don't have a estimate on when the next stage will be, but, um, I'm hoping before the next snowstorm. So that project is moving along, and we're happy for that. Um, updating the council chamber upgrades, I said last meeting that we are looking to improve the audio visual, uh, just the feel and sound and participation in this room, for the people who were thankful for the show up every time we have a meeting, and for the people who would want to view it from a remote location. I think we talked about, uh, an RFP, uh, I don't know, there's a possibility, next step on that, but I don't know where we, where we are, but do you have any new information on that? Okay, we can talk about that.
Do we get a quote on that?
We do have one, one quote, but we need more.
Then it's true, RFP. Can we ask for it?
Yes.
I know we asked, I just couldn't remember, because-
Soon we can talk about next steps in that. Um, I don't know, anyone have any questions? Updates and what? Thank you.
Community and economic development, come to the building.
Thank you. Uh, downtown public services manager, Department of Transit, she's been, thank you. Do you want to review, or is it pretty self-explanatory this time?
Um, I'll leave that up to you.
Do you want to give any quick highlights?
I do.
Okay. Please be kind to Councilperson Booker. Keep it short.
Oh, okay. Um, I met with the owner of Spice Restaurant and Bar, um, this is the business that will be going into Colony House Restaurant space. I talked with them about, and about face grant and a Cumberland Street View grant for the building, awful lot to address there, um, but I was emphatic in that those owners need to come down, and we knew that one of those programs would fund, um, new panels for the back, but non-conforming sign. So we're happy to do something different if, if they care to proceed there, and I think they may. They had some other suggestions, uh, really high-cost suggestions, like masonry work, that wouldn't have the same impact, is necessary, I'm sure, but we look for things that, um, I would say the before and after picture looks different, and you see the investment that's been made. Moving on to business and property updates, probably saw the announcement about smoking pickles, artist in butcher shop, and can't imagine how I feel. Um, but we've known, this has come, been coming for several months. Uh, Kelly left her position at Messiah Lifeways and took a very nice position in New Jersey, they bought a home a couple months ago, so this wasn't a surprise. And we've been working with one interest in particular that would like to come in here, it is an eatery as well, um, a meeting with a lender on that, it, we were hoping to make the announcement about the closure and what was coming all at one time, but that project simply is nowhere near ready to announce, and we'll continue on with it. In the meantime, there are some other interests going, looking to go in there, one is a butcher shop, um, there are another couple eateries, and there's a meeting next week with one of those who is a, which is a business from, uh, the Philadelphia area, so good things will come, and I, I look at it this way, if you remember, if you haven't blocked it out, what that building inside and out looked like before, we have a much more marketable space now, and we knew the announcement would, would prompt some, uh, attention to that. Going back to Spice Restaurant and Bar, there are minor improvements to the inside flooring, being one of them, this will be an Indian and Nepali, not Nepali, Nepali, uh, restaurant, they are working to transfer the economic development, excuse me, the restaurant, the hotel liquor license to these owners, this is an installment sales agreement, uh, so the, the ownership has not changed yet and will not change, so it'll be interesting to see how that works with the, uh, the license. Um, anyway, they're gonna, not going to have a bar, they will have seated alcohol liquor service. They're laser focused on the first floor, no discussion at all about the upper floors. Totem Pole Winery opens later this week, we have a ribbon cutting Thursday, this is in the same location where Cristiano on Main Winery was, um, Andrew Huffman owns that building, they're going to carry their own products, Cristiano products, and some other Pennsylvania wines and beers and things like that. The Pennsylvania Tea Festival was a week and a half ago, very, very successful, beautiful weather, that helped a lot, they had over seven hundred and fifty attendees, including some teen media, national teen media, a lot of people from out of state, and we're finding that there are people who are making that trip, uh, every year. Vanique Antique, the family that lived there has vacated there, building a home, uh, this is available, I have somebody who's interested in buying it, they were the backup buyer, a few years ago when it sold, um, the owners now aren't interested in selling it, but we're still talking to them. The announcement was made a couple months ago about the community development block grant money for twenty twenty-two, and that the borough would be receiving, hopefully went well and was approved by Housing and Urban Development, a hundred thousand dollars for the Renaissance Mechanicsburg project on the square. We've had some internal programming and staffing changes, and we have advanced those grant agreements by about three months, so those are in the mail now, I told Ms. James that I would be in touch. We're going to work internally on the required low-income survey, uh, I did a very similar project in a neighborhood that looked very, very different, overlooks the Susquehanna River, and I was able to get that one through, so I, I think we're in good shape here. So that'll mean those monies will be available much earlier than anticipated, and we'll no longer have to say pending in terms of, uh, grants. Uh, please note the remark under the Borough Loan Program, the very last part of my report, and happy to answer any questions.
Do, do you get a buy that there will be improvements made to the, uh, upper story of the, um, the Spice Restaurant?
Not immediately, not in the, not in the short term.
There's a lot of people there.
There are still people living there.
There are a lot of them. Yep.
Well, again, this is an installment sales agreement, so they're not the, the owners, I would expect that they would be staying there, yeah.
So in, in installment sales agreement, obviously, has lots of different forms, you're suggesting that the old property owners are retaining ownership of the property, but the business is moving in on the first floor, basically, it's a tenant, and then there's a, an agreement to transfer the property ownership?
Yeah, they, they have, I haven't, I've not seen, and it's, it's not really my place to ask to see that, unless we get into some other things. They aren't looking for financing, might be some clues there.
The one would be about face grant, though.
Yeah, I went to them, yeah. But that, they lost face grant, and even the Street View grant doesn't give me cause to say I need to see your sales agreement.
But it's just you referenced it, so I was asking if you-
I think it's important that you know that.
Is there a reason?
They're, you know, they're trickier.
It's not an ideal way to acquire a business or interest in real estate, um, it's, because of the, the, the person serve has very limited rights under an installment sale agreement.
Right.
So it's, it's a, an arrangement, and you see it frequently, at least I've seen it frequently in the restaurant business, where, um, where someone wants to buy, buy a restaurant, the owner will sell it under an installment sale agreement, and as soon as there is a, a breach of the agreement, the, the operator is, is kicked out of the, out of the business. Yeah, so is the restaurant a separate entity, or do you own, own the restaurant? I mean, we don't know, I, I, I don't, I'm going to be speculating, I don't know, to what they're doing with their liquor license, I guess, that may very well be the case.
Yeah, and you know there are provisions, there are things that, um, that come along with that particular license, and you have to have so many guest rooms, you can combine them, but you have to have, I believe it's twelve, in the hotel.
Do they have to be occupied rooms, like, for the time of the year, or?
I don't know that that's the case, but that gets back to the question about whether there will be people living there, and, and there will, because they need to have, it needs to function as a hotel.
Do we have any, do we have any concerns that, that needs to be, congress enough? Uh, no, I, frankly, I don't know that it's, for the, for our purview to, um, to weed away in on, on the subject. Right, okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for, for that? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
County Commission met, um, recently, and reviewed the Legacy Park, um, plans, they're going to get back to, like, commission some initial details. Uh, we're still waiting, I believe, for some additional details from Groul for their proposed expansion. And President Moore, you were there at last meeting as well, I'm forgetting something in my mind.
Tattoo, the, the, uh-
Oh, the tattoo, Harvey, thank you. Um, as Chairperson Stone just reminded me, so the tattoo, Harvey, he, he was tabled, they're coming back with some additional information on his possible entry into the Shepherd's grave. Harvey Adrian, uh, Councilman Agerton, do you have anything?
I won't be sure for this one.
Do you have any?
Oh, wait, I take that back, I think we have some in your front for her line. Um, so we had two applicants to join the board, they'll be on the agenda next time, um, a broker and a community member at large. They also revamped the application process with a checklist, um, they put a lot of work in it, so we're going to present that to council, just for review, it doesn't change anything, it just makes it more specific, and a shout out to the codes department, they put together a display, so that when people come in to apply, um, it gives examples of what they're looking for, so I'm actually really proud of the progress that the Heart has made, I think it's going to make our exchanges, um, with, um, applicants to be much more positive experience, so a big shout out to them, so we'll have that on the agenda next month.
Great to hear, thank you. The MP, you're on Councilman Agerton?
I know, nothing to start quite here.
Okay. Uh, committee amateur discussion, well, I'm the MP, I remember, remember considering another event, which is always great to hear, so hopefully we'll hear some more about that.
Yeah, they have a, they have a large agenda for this year, so.
Uh, committee amateur discussion, uh, they have a comprehensive plan, I mean, they gave us some information, especially the day-to-day, did most of you get it or not?
Yeah, it should be in front of everybody.
The printout is?
It should be, and then it's just, it's also, you know, that will forward everyone.
That was, that was slower than I think, just before the meeting.
It was more, really, just before.
Just before the meeting.
And it took a few follow-ups in order to get the information, so I think we need to review it, try and inform that that I really wanted it to be in, but, um, we'll take a look at what, what I asked for, mainly concerning, wanted to get a handle on the next steps, exactly what they are, when they should be, and what the cost will be, so that we can budget for that for next year, moving forward, so.
And just-
To keep the ball rolling on this.
Just like to add that this is not for lack of council asking for this information, this is a holdup elsewhere, and, uh, I think the elsewhere is beginning, or soon will begin to understand, constipated, slightly frustrating, looking alike, so the council would just say that we're trying to get it, and if you could review the information at the seventeen, late today, then we'll be ready for hopefully a better update next time, next meeting. Thank you, President Moore, for your input, and that's all I have.
Okay. Public Works of Recreation, Councilman Brown.
Um, I do not have anything from the record, we'll be meeting, uh, next, Shade Tree, Councilman Booker?
Uh, yeah, so I, I gave my report for Shade Tree at the last meeting, so I do apologize, uh, but basically, Shade Tree, uh, they're a hundred and ten trees planting, and we talked about how some, um, somebody in the area has found that they were going to take a bomb, and it's supposed to steal some of the trees, so keep your eye peeled for that.
It was an elderberry, so you see an elderberry about this high, first one so far, I think.
Um, but, yeah, that, that's been our report, then.
And anything for E A C?
Uh, yeah, so as you saw, there was an agenda item about moving the, um, the line item until next year, we're never looking at eight for the next, um, electronics recycling event, um, which I believe was, is, uh, intended with plan for April twenty-ninth, um, and the event was, um, on the consent agenda, uh, last meeting, so that was, it's great that you're going to get another, so, wow, yeah, in my report.
All right. All right, so we have a couple of items for discussion, um, we have a presentation on the Blue Star Memorial in Memorial Park, we have a little handout.
Good evening, I'm Kayanne Agashman Pressland of Penn Cumberland Garden Club, on the West Shore. Um, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about installing, the possibility of installing a Blue Star Memorial, uh, marker at the Soldier's and Sellers Memorial Park. Um, Penn Cumberland's been active on the West Shore for over sixty years as a garden club, and we've maintained seasonal planning in several areas in Mechanicsburg, including the historic Frankenberg Tavern, and then around the train station, and there's a church across from the Frankenberg Tavern where we also work. We're committed to serving the area, and we'd be grateful to, uh, have the opportunity to place this memorial marker here in Mechanicsburg, what better place? Um, garden clubs in this country have been installing these Blue Star markers across the country since the end of World War Two, they're called Blue Star because of the Blue Star flag that denoted a service, uh, a member of the family or business serving in World War Two. Um, they've installed thousands of these markers, at one time they envisioned this as a ribbon along the highways across the country, and they've expanded the program to include veterans facilities, public parks, and other public facilities. A Blue Star marker has even been installed on the beach at Normandy, in honor of the seventieth anniversary- in honor of the seventieth anniversary of the invasion and it's now becoming an international project. I've met with your Public Works Director, Mr. Lehr, at the park. The Borough has this incredible forty plus acre park, which is actively used by your community residents and it was determined that the best possible marker for this type of park with the size and everything would be what is known as the Blue Star Memorial Marker. It would be a seven foot, six inch high installation and the marker would be forty one inches wide by forty five inches wide, the plaque that's mounted almost full. And these are the kind that are most often installed along our highways. You see them in the rest stops at the Pennsylvania Turnpike. You go to a rest stop, you look for that, 'cause I think there's one in every rest stop down across Pennsylvania. And they've also been the ones installed at the national cemeteries and, excuse me, medical centers and other locations such as the park. And to alleviate your fears, the cost of this marker will of course be borne by Pen Cumberland Garden Club, cost of being purchasing an installation of the marker. What we are after is your permission to install such a marker. And because of the logistics involved and supply chain issues and all of that, we would have to order this anywhere from twelve to sixteen weeks ahead of the time a dedication would be held. And because of these logistics, it would probably, we would be looking at the spring of 2023 before we could do such a thing. And usually after the marker is installed, they'll install it, you know, quietly anonymously and then there's some sort of a dedication held with local people and there's usually a presentation of the colors, pledge of allegiance and someone from the borough would come and take ownership of the marker. And as far as maintenance of the little area around it, we have a civic purification committee, which is a group that does the plantings at Frankenberg and around the train station and if necessary, they would be the ones who would maintain this little area. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them if I can, but I want to thank you for your time and attention and consideration of this request. I know you're not gonna do it tonight, but Mr. Lehr has our club contact information. So I appreciate your attention, thank you. Are there any questions?
One quick question. When you're not together with Public Works right away, did you decide on the location that would be appropriate for it?
Well, there is an area close to the entrance of the park. I believe there was a cannon, there was some piece of artillery there.
There is a piece of artillery which used to be located in the semicircle in the front. Can I discuss that that would be a possibility of having that in the vicinity if you can? Or maybe we kind of, I think, both felt that having it in the center, in the semicircle, like grassy area would be a better location? Kind of redevelop the old entrance to the park? We discussed it a couple times, a little bit, but it's an open area. I mean, you know, certain activities are held in there, the craft show that we just approved and that they've already had. So I mean, that area is, obviously it's a part of the park, so we try to take care of it as much as possible. But I think that will...
Is there also any opportunity to do it at the entrance where the gardens could be out, like as it enters the park? Or is that too, too...
I feel that foot traffic in the area, in that area...
Not, not foot traffic?
Pardon?
Not, not foot traffic in that?
Oh, it is too much, yeah, especially to the left because of, one of the reasons being the day cancer in the summer. As far as trampling any, I mean, we don't have, we haven't discussed the exact format of any gardening that might be done, but we also, we did discuss the possibility of incorporating some of the monuments that exist already in the borough and, you know, as long as they're along the same lines of honoring veterans or military service, possibly being, you know, a patient to their monument. So, I mean, I think that... I feel that the center, in the semicircle area would be the best and it'll give us a good excuse and a good reason to clean it up even more. But I feel, you know, to the left of the park or even further down Washington Street heading north is kind of out of the way and maybe wouldn't get noticed as much and we don't wanna hide it behind any, you know, we wanna kind of have it, keep it out in the open in front of Mr. Naylor's house so they can keep an eye on it now. But it hasn't been set in stone, so to say, but...
What's our reasonable time to put it on the agenda for action or approval? For you to come up with a location that we can last and move forward, so that we can order it or...
If you'd like to, it sounds like I'm going to be here for the next meeting now.
You have it on the eighteenth, I think I'm with you.
Like I said, it does take anywhere from twelve to sixteen weeks. And if it would be possible to have the marker delivered to the borough, where we could all, like Mr. Lehr and I could open it at the same time, look at it, make sure it's right, it's not printed wrong, because each one of these things is made individually. So it would be better if the tourist could look at it at one time or anybody else who wanted to, you know, be part of that to make sure it was correct. So we kind of thought maybe if, like, it would have to be spring because you can't install this in the middle of winter and...
We're looking at...
Sounds like a challenge, I think we could.
And I've discussed, I don't know what, you know, as far as an honor guard or anything like that. I mean, we can, I can reach out, I can provide that locally where you, if you guys have...
Well, I noticed in my travels, I'm not from Mechanicsburg, I'm sorry, but I noticed in my travels through here the past couple of weeks is I saw the American Legion on the corner somewhere.
Yeah, we have a new contact.
You know, other places have had high school bands come in and, you know, play a couple of patriotic songs and, you know, do the pledge and then they always end with a pass because it is a memorial, so...
That was a thought, it's a kind of, it's a public event, all of you, of course, would be invited, you know. Of course, we'll need your special help with your...
Somebody from the borough does have to basically accept it. And we've done with so many of these and like I said, there probably one at every rest stop on the turnpike, so...
It'd be kind of unique for us to have it here in our park rather than along the highway.
Yeah, I mean, they do, places like Indian Town Gap or someplace like that, but we were looking for a park that actually was dedicated more to the military and this one came up and somebody knew a contact here, so...
Thank you, Chief General.
Very kind.
So if you, you know, let me get back to me. Like I said, he has our contact, public contact information and I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
All right, then moving on to discussion on the thirty four West Allen Street structural proposal, which would be attachment number?
Yes, this was, this came in from Engineer Golsky and it's being provided to Council of FYI and for kind of blessing and discussion to move forward because it's something we have budgeted for for this year. We have budgeted actually to do something this year, so this was a recommendation of Engineer Golsky to go into and to study it in more detail, to give us some concrete, concrete way forward.
Ready for the discussion, Jorge? All right, and we have an update on the feasibility study. Are we talking about the pool?
The pool feasibility study.
Okay, so that was, that was all pretty much on the H's report.
It was, they did show me and, you know, said that the pressure testing is done, cordboards are done, pools have been detailed and cast, you know, the backhouse done and cast. In a couple of weeks, they will be in touch to schedule a press meetings, which, assuming by that they mean the meetings of the steering committee, which they assigned, they were given out to the members of the committee.
Okay, so that's all I have, thanks very much.
Okay, on to personnel committee.
So we'll have an expected question, Jorge?
Yes, I can agree with that. Do they want a citizen comment, any citizen comments? Just a couple of comments, create an opportunity to review the agreement for the ladies. In the form of, I mean, the R B N systems assurance process, which was a two-step process, there was a technical review, there was a legal review. It was a little disappointed to the low specifications for some of the things, such as this car, kind of things, which I've already voiced, but there are some issues in the, in the, in the, in the, so there are some things that weren't clear. But if you can say which way it's different and which don't. I mean, it's kind of vague and I think the borough should have some say in that, but it's not clear what they do. And that's a, that's a, a work, a work program, but there are some things in there that are kind of a little rushing, rushing, that doesn't get the borough outside of anything. And my mantra with, because what I did in the form of, was the floor, the first to bring in this, we need to protect both and favor this new. This seems to be pointing a little, a little in V P L's direction. But this is just a concern I'm looking at this. My other question, our cost evaluation, well, cost evaluation, because I referenced tariffs over here. And it's also a term that you need for the contract, what's tied to the tariff. So that's kind of vague in this situation. Where comparisons done by some today's tariffs between the professional setting and the nowadays. To actually tell where it really is, I mean, what the cost savings might be. And if, if any sets an objective, how do we ensure it's met, because there's no baseline for that. There's really no project schedule, there's no budget compression date, there's no compression criteria. There's a ton of things that the county needed, the best of your first experience, I didn't, I didn't eat with tariff. It's, it didn't, it was something worth to keep the help with. It was a factor for just some of the comments. I hope it all works out, I wouldn't have been able to see it, but I would have been great. So thank you very much, Richard.
I have one more thing.
Sure.
My phone hangs in there. Her wife sent me a picture, so I'd just like to show that. This is what happens when you don't pay attention to like... This is, this was from tonight, my mother-in-law's house, which is about three miles, three miles away from its source.
Poor cardio.
Your current, your current can't stop that.
No, that was supposed to be corrected, like that...
It was, but there's, there's another issue there.
That's what I read.
Any other fellow comments?
Thank you, Richard.
And now, other business?
Other business?
Pink likes to...
Just a reminder, the Harlem Parade is Tuesday, the eleventh, strictly, it's Saturday, it's one of the greatest events we have in our borough, so come on down. Is it high roll? It's one of the greatest events in town, who's telling us Monday? She left the candy.
Why do you hire a high school kid to come get the candy off the street?
Maintenance or something?
Yeah.
We didn't see one.
Oh, you can follow, you can follow through. Just the thing that, well, the internet, the schools, the feedback from the parents and the teachers were that none of the kids were scared and that when they came out and followed the protest activity, that everything was handled so well and the teachers were very impressed by the presence and the quickness and the quickness of it, so thank you.
I would echo that, Manchester Works of Nillington, so I, I mean, not only did our community school for us, it also, like, my family works there, so I do appreciate the work that you guys did with that situation. Spring to train to the fifteenth, so another reminder to be active, I'll leave for the other major shows ever done in town.